Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the school committee meeting of December 22nd, 2021. Before we start with the Pledge of Allegiance, one of our committee members had asked if we could just take a moment of silence to remember former student Vinnie LaRosi and former teacher and coach James Daly. So if you could please join me in a moment of silence, please. Thank you. You can join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible)
So we're going to jump around a little bit. The school committee has the agenda, so Jeff, I think you have the first item.
So one of the best things as superintendent is I can highlight the excellence of our students. And tonight, from the Mass Association of School Superintendents, I have the unique privilege to honor and award two certificates of academic excellence to two seniors. They both happen to be young women, and in your packet, school committee, you've seen their resume. They're very diverse. They're strong academic, music, art, volunteer work, athletics. They are the whole Whitman-Hanson Panther package. So tonight, we have April and Celia, and I'm going to award them a certificate. April, I'm going to go with Celia first. Celia Goyette, approach the podium.
I'll reach you up there. If you'd like to say a few words.
I just want to thank Superintendent Simonak. It truly is an honor to receive this tonight. And Whitman-Hanson is a great place to be, and I'm so honored just to be a part of the community as a whole.
Awesome. Thank you. I'll grab you in a minute. Thank you so much. And April Keyes.
I just wanted to say thank you to everyone. Without Whitman-Hanson's great classes and resources, I don't think I could have done this, so thank you.
Outstanding.
Mr. Farrell, can you get a picture?
Sure.
(Inaudible).
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 You folks don't have to stay.
Yeah, you're welcome.
You're welcome to leave.
Free to go.
Free to go.
Last-minute shopping, whatever you need.
Thank you so much. Congratulations, ladies.
Congrats, girls.
Great job.
(Inaudible).
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 All right. So while they're doing that, public comment, we'll open it up if anyone has any. Any public comments tonight? Once, twice. There is a rumor floating around that Hanson PTO will be joining us one of these nights to twist some arms or perhaps solicit some support for a polar plunge, so I'm just warning you.
Mr. Voice.
If you see them coming, you might want to run away.
Well, wait a minute. Where's Mr. Farrell first?
Mr. Farrell will be in. Dr. Jones will be in.
He'll be coming. So next item, I think Anna. Anna, you're ready to go. Student advisory report.
My name is Anna Flynn, and I'm a senior here at Whitman-Hanson. I've been welcomed home here this evening to give a voice to the student body. These past few weeks have been a roller coaster for students and staff here at Whitman-Hanson. I've heard and been in various discussions with my peers about multiple topics around school, such as the dress code, safety, health, and quarter grades. I know a lot of individuals, including myself, have had thoughts about the dress code and how some students get treated differently than others. I was thankful that class officers and the student council officers were able to meet with Dr. Jones to discuss the dress code and other topics relating to it. Furthermore, numerous people have concerns regarding safety while in the building. A lot of talk goes around within the student body, and no student wants to have the fear of what horrifying events may take place during their school day. To bring up another point, COVID-19 cases have risen over the last couple of weeks, and this has brought anxiety among students and staff. I, and a few of my friends, have talked about how happy we are that teachers have been speaking up about wearing masks properly in their classroom. Another conversation among students is quarter grades. Coming from a senior's perspective, having four hard grades rather than two hard grades and two progress reports is very overwhelming due to the fact that if you make one mistake on an assignment, it is difficult to bring your grade back up in time. On the other hand, sports teams have had a great start to their winter seizing, and it is exciting to be able to see how it's all going to play out. I was fortunate enough to see the music department perform today well in school, and I can proudly say it was amazing, and everyone involved clearly showed their talents. We had a great turnout, and it definitely brought smiles to the buildings with Spirit Week this week. We even had a drive-in movie, and we watched Alpha on Monday night. In addition, it is well-known that students and staff are very excited for vacation, and I know it is well-deserved for everyone. Thank you for having me here tonight. I hope you all have a great holiday break and a Happy New Year.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks, Anna.
Anyone have any questions for Anna before she takes off? Okay, awesome.
Thanks, Anna. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Well done.
Thank you.
All right. Next item is meeting minutes, so I would look to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of November 17th, 2021, please.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Yes?
I was not at the meeting.
Yep.
And under Members' President, it says that I arrived at 6:30.
Oh.
I did not arrive at 6:30.
Okay.
So that just means...
We really, we thought you were here.
Yeah.
So would you like to motion for an amendment?
Yes, I would like to motion for an amendment to strike that part of the numbers.
Second. Any discussion? Everyone else was here, or at least physically present? Speaking for myself. All right. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Unanimous. Any discussion on the minutes as amended? Right. Seeing none, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Any? Great. Unanimous. Okay. We'll now move into new business. So Circuit Breaker wanted to give a little bit of an update. So the original plan for tonight was to really do a fairly in-depth review of a number of questions that had come up pertaining to Circuit Breaker. However, a number of folks have been out, and that really hampered efforts to pull everything together. So Chris Scriven is the vice chair, and I met with administration, really to try and make sure that we're trying to get some of the questions that have been raised to them so that they can be prepared to answer them. And what we'd like to do is plan on having a meeting Wednesday, January 5th, with Circuit Breaker being the only topic on the agenda. So at that point, we'll go through a complete deep dive analysis, start the meeting off with a general overview of how Circuit Breaker works, and then go into the specific questions that have been posed and/or submitted. So what we're asking folks to do is if you have any questions pertaining to Circuit Breaker, whether you're here or listening, if you could email both Jeff and I, between the two of us, we'll make sure they don't get missed, and then we'll make sure that those go to administration so they can be answered. We're asking everyone, if possible, to please get us questions on or before the 27th. That way, we can make sure that the administration has time to go ahead and get those answered. What we'll do is then we'll organize the questions, and on the meeting on the 5th, we'll just go through them one by one by one. The conversations we've had with Jeff is that, you know, some of these are going to require supporting information and handouts, so we'll make sure that that information is available both to the committee and to the public that wants to attend the meeting so that they can follow along as well. In terms of how we'll organize that meeting, we're just going to take them one at a time. We'll make sure all the questions go to everyone. That way, you know if, for example, we're on question two, and David really has a question, and he sees it's number eight, you know, he can kind of hold off. Conversely, if he sees a follow-up question and we're on number two, that might make it a good place to ask that question. So that's really the plan for that meeting. Any questions on that? I think based upon our conversations, that's probably the best way to just get everyone all the information together. Yes?
I hope I didn't miss this, but would it be a 6:30 meeting?
Yeah, it would be a normal meeting, 6:30 on the 5th, and so thank you.
Thank you.
Generally speaking, are folks available for that?
We had a tentative step. We're going to reschedule.
Yeah, we'll schedule that.
Yes.
So you're planning on being here?
I was going to be here anyway.
Thank you for that. Okay. So will, Michelle, we can post that out. That'll be the only item on the agenda, so we might as well just post that sooner rather than later. Fantastic. Okay. Jeff, the next several superintendents.
So after our last school committee meeting, I reported out around the student advisory committee to the school committee. So I asked Mr. Moyardi, I don't know if you folks know Mr. Moyardi, he's the student council president. He usually runs the elections through student council, the student, two students that serve on the Mass Student Advisory Committee. So I just want to go through the process that he used to entertain or gather students for this committee. So he sent an email out to each class on November 30th. According to Mass General Laws, Part 1, Section 12, 38m, the Whitman-Hanson School Committee is to meet with five-member student advisory committee made up of students in high school elected by the student body. These students elect a chair of their advisory committee, meet every other month with the school committee members. The students give feedback to the school committee and give voice to students concerned. This is a position that will require a time commitment from you, but a great opportunity for interested students. If you are interested in being on this advisory committee, you must see Mr. Mo in room 210 to be put on the ballot by the end of school on December 8th. Plan schedule is follows: December 8th. Deadline for interested students to let Mr. Mo know they're interested. If six or more, ballot out to students and students voting. Voting ends on December 14th, when there's announced. We were supposed to meet December 16th to the 21st. COVID got in the way of that a little bit. And announce students to the school committee tonight, which I have the privilege to do. So he followed up with an email on December 8th to 13 students. First off, thank you for being, or for having interest in your school. You are all on this email because you've expressed an interest in being on this committee to speak with members of the school committee. Here's how it will work. The state says there can be up to five students, so we will be having a school-wide election. This is what you must do. Film yourself, be sure you hold your form horizontally, and in about a minute's speech, introduce yourself and tell students why you'd like to be on this committee and why they should consider voting for you. You must get this video to Mr. Casey, email or stop by his room by the end of school tomorrow. Mr. Casey will put the video together for everyone's speeches, and we will send a link out to students. There is no guarantee that students will watch it, but we're going to make it available for them to see. They'll put a ballot in, it'll be a Google form, that'll be open for kids to vote on. The ballot names will be in the order of the students that came to express interest to me. The voting will be open to students until December 14th, and students will be instructed to vote for up to five of you. The five winners will be the five total votes. And I think I sent the link out to all of you to show those student videos. I thought they were really impressive. If you have any questions, let me know. So drum roll, please. These are your five representatives. Ms. Flynn, Anna Flynn was one of the vote-getters, Celia Goyette, Emma McKeon, Riley Getchell, and Noah Roberts. They are our students, the student advisory committee to the school committee. I will meet with them when we get back from break to have them elect a chair, kind of give the overview of what can be said in a public meeting, you know, and this is the big thing that I want to stress. They can't say, oh, Mr. Mo is this, or Ms. so-and-so is this, or whatever, in an open meeting to the school committee. But they will, their first meeting will be with you in February. We have our budget meeting on the 2nd. They will be at the next school committee meeting. So I want to congratulate them formally. I haven't been able to meet with them, but I wanted to introduce them to you as your students to the, of the student advisory committee to the school committee. Any questions about that? I think it was a really good process. I was happy that they were, you were able to see the videos that they sent. They were well put together, and I think you have a good, good voice, good student voice for this year. Any questions? So one of the things that Anna just mentioned was student safety, and it's something that I wanted to talk about a little bit today. And I'm going to combine student safety and COVID. So kind of both, health and safety, safety. So we had some, some, some serious issues around student safety the past couple of weeks. On 12/6, that Monday, it was reported by our police department to Dr. Jones, myself, central administration, that there was an indirect threat to schools on the South Shore. Those schools, after digging in with police, with Chief Mix, it was Brockton High and Taunton High. Whitman-Hanson was not on this alleged Snapchat that there was going to be an issue at school. We also received an email from the, or I got an email from the Brockton High principal because Brockton was, was one of the targets, about an increase of safety, discussing things. Again, we have an outstanding relationship with our SROs and our PDs. They brought a police presence to the high school, which was nice because it was, you know, something we do. It wasn't huge, so you didn't see cruisers everywhere. It was very discreet, but there were officers around campus as students arrived. Dr. Jones was out of the office, dealing with a family issue in Connecticut. Mr. Simonak was in bed with COVID, so we were on the phones back and forth doing this. Later that morning, Mr. Farrell was in charge with Mr. Fleck running a tight ship. Later, I got a call that some students, and this is important, some students took a photograph off of Snapchat, off of Instagram, of another student who was playing airsoft in the, in the summer, okay? And he was dressed in full camo. And they put a tag under it, "Don't come to school today." Okay? So they superimposed something on this student who had nothing to do with this. The students, once they were identified who did this, were consequence with the police and with the, the high school office. I want to say that those students were very compliant and, and cooperative. But we had to send out a, a follow-up email to our community because the young man who was in the picture was getting harassed a little bit, and people were afraid of him. He didn't do anything wrong. He did nothing wrong. He was just in a picture, like any of us would have done, and somebody took our head and put it to a, to a, to a, to another body. So the police have that situation, the school has issued consequences, and, and the juvenile justice system now has those students in, in process. That's one incident of, of safety. The second came on last Friday. I think you all were aware of the, the national TikTok thing, bring a gun to school, even elementary. After discussing it with police, we, we knew about it, but we didn't bring police officers here. Again, Officer Harrington from Hanson, Officer Harrington from Whitman, the Harrington brothers, you know, flowed around the district, and they, they see and hear what's, what's going on. So we didn't add a huge presence. However, it's causing some anxiety with students. That Monday situation, there was a high exodus of students getting dismissed, and I can't blame a student because when that picture came out, it's kind of concerning. Friday's attendance, not so bad, but I know people are, have anxiety and angst. So we followed up. We had an original safety meeting prior to all this stuff going on with the chiefs. We meet quarterly with the, both police chiefs, both fire chiefs, their deputy chiefs, our SROs, our, our security team, which consists of operations, facilities, building principals, George, myself. We were supposed to meet when I was out with COVID as well. So we met with Derek and Kevin on Monday to talk about what we do already as a district for safety. And we use, you know, worst-case scenario is an active shooter, we use the Alice protocol. They will be reviewing with our teachers through the month of January. Every staff will be retrained in Alice, making sure that they, their questions are asked and they have an idea of what's going on. I will hold a public forum with both chiefs. Both chiefs don't know what date yet because probably their SROs haven't told them yet, but somewhere between January and February break, when those chiefs are available. And both SROs will discuss what we do at the ground level for Alice, for our staff and for our students. Both SROs are also going to actively work on a video using our students to show our students what should be done in a crisis. The Canton SRO has done this. It was done about 10 years ago. It's, it's outstanding because it's, you can see kids in your own building doing things in, in a worst-case scenario. We also will be training or sharing information with students age-appropriately throughout the course of January to April. There are different levels of what we share or how we react, high school students, middle school students, and elementary students, based upon their social-emotional makeup. And we don't want to put, we don't want to scare students. We just want them to know what to do in case of an emergency. So prior to Anna mentioning this, I know this is bubbling around, we addressed it with our, with our PDs, and we're going to get it out to the, to the folks. Back in 2014, I was one of the original Alice instructors for the district. We did a presentation for our community. It's time we revisit that. COVID has kind of put a, put a blanket of, hey, let's deal with COVID. Well, these issues are happening as well, so we want to make sure our staff and, and students are prepared for something that we don't ever want to think of, but we want to be prepared versus reactive. So just to let you know, that's where we're at with, with student safety and, and those pieces. Jeff, question?
Yeah. Jeff, you know, with the original Alice training, we have a lot of new teachers since then. Have they been trained as they come in, or does the program explain to them?
So...
Or will this be something new for them in January?
George, grab that because, because pre-COVID, up till when we actually went out, we were, and the past year it's been a little drag.
So, so just so you know, we were on our way pre-COVID to be an Alice-recognized national school. And in doing so, we had a contract with Alice for professional development. So every teacher would receive at the beginning of the school year, and they were given, I want to say it was three weeks, to complete a self-paced video, and they could print their certificate. From there, the next step was tabletops and things of that nature. So we got to that. Since COVID, we have not. So what we're doing right now is not only are we training the staff, but we're also having our school resource officers sort of walk through the training in a video. So we're recording their voices in the video, and that is now going to be part of our onboarding process for every substitute, for every new teacher, for custodians, for cafeteria, and that nature. We did take a stop, really, with COVID, and now it's time to bring that back.
That, that video that they're preparing is, is essential because we don't think about the substitute we hire next week, but they could be in a classroom when something bad happens. And they don't necessarily come back to our school. They, they could work daily, weekly, whatever, but this is going to be part of our onboarding process for every new employee will see this protocol, no matter what you do in the district. So thanks for that question, Beth. Yes?
I just have a, a sort of comment slash question. On that Monday when a lot of the kids were leaving because they were terrified, that was sort of, I guess, an unexcused dismissal, and they were told they weren't allowed to come back. There was like a scrimmage or something, and they weren't allowed back in the building. Is that a rule that is enforced by you guys? Because my daughter...
You can answer that.
I'm not sure why that would...
That's your wheelhouse. You know how I feel.
There wouldn't be an exception to something like that.
I, yes.
Because that was, it wasn't an unexcused dismissal. The, the kids were terrified, my own included.
The, the excuses, the absences were excused. They were across-the-board excuse. They weren't...
But they were told they couldn't come back for scrimmages or watch a game or anything like that. So I'm just wondering, who and, what is that? Is that an MIA rule or the coach?
That's typically out of our handbook, that if a student isn't in school for the prescribed amount of time, that they can't participate in scrimmages.
Right. But if it was an excuse dismissal, why weren't they allowed to come back and participate in their, their sporting event, once we knew that everything was safe? Like, they, they were blatantly told, no, they can't come.
Chris wasn't here, so I can easily let him answer that. But I did have a conversation with Bob Rogers. It came up with a few students in particular. So what the decision was made was, was that if they were nervous enough that they weren't, didn't want to be in school that day or on premises, that they would not, they would not participate for the rest of the afternoon, but they would not have anything held against them as far as playing time, as far as doing something at practice, on the other hand. And the feeling was at that time, if you were too, if you were afraid to be in the presence of school, then for the rest of that day, you would not be coming back to school. I think what Chris Jones is alluding to is that in a normal day, if you leave, you can't come back, and there might be ramifications on your team. Well, I stressed to Mr., with Athletic Director Rogers, and what we stressed to the students was there were no ramifications in the team setting on that day.
I know, but I know there was plenty of students that heard that things were safe, and they, they wanted to come back and participate and see their friends and, and play in their scrimmage or go to the game, and they were told they couldn't. It was no exception. No one was budging to that exception that day.
Yeah, I don't, yes. I, I don't disagree with you. I'm, I'm, I'm sure there was discontent in the district, but we made a decision that said, if you left school for that day, then you remained out for that day. Was it the best course of action in retrospect? I mean, obviously, there's angst, but that's the decision we made at that time.
Is there going to be talk about in the future, perhaps? I mean, not that this is going to be a regular occurrence, that maybe there's a little bit of understanding that kids left because they were devastated and scared, but once they got the all-clear, they were ready to come back and participate.
I think the high school principal's hearing you right now, so I think there could be some discussion and some thought process. I, 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 there'll be some discussion. We had discussion about the unexcused versus excused absence because originally there were unexcused absences and we modified that rather quickly. So I think it's a discussion. And, you know, again, worst case scenario, different things happen. But yeah, we can have that conversation. Any other things on the overall safety piece? I'm going to shift to COVID a little bit. So since Monday, the 13th to today, 17 high school students and two staff members have tested positive. Seven middle school, Whitman Middle School students, four staff. Two students at Hanson Middle School, one staff. Duval, eight students, one staff. Conley, 10 students. Indian Head, seven students. Pre-K, one student, one staff. The COVID piece is escalating. You're seeing it on the news. There was a commissioners meeting today with Desi. We didn't hear a whole lot of new stuff, not a good stuff, nothing, nothing major. However, the mask requirement is supposed to be lifted on January 15th. The commissioner was supposed to make a decision whether he was going to continue that or remove that, whatever. There's been no decision. So he's leaving us out there. He said he'll have some information in the next five to eight days, depending on where things go. I personally can say I had COVID. My whole family had COVID. I was pretty sick. My wife had the sniffles. My son had no symptoms and my daughter, you would have never known. The protocols we use are the protocols from Desi verbatim. Our school nurses knew more, know more about COVID than most DPHs. When DPH called my house, they had different assumptions of what school looked like for our kids. I understand frustration with parents with vaccinated students and unvaccinated students. At one point, when my wife was yelling at the school nurse and saying, "That's stupid", I had to say, "Honey, these are the protocols." Because, and I'll be, again, very upfront. I'm a vaccinated person. My wife's vaccinated. My son's vaccinated. My daughter had one dose. Her second dose was the second day I was tested positive. So she's an unvaccinated kid. My son had no symptoms and is a close contact to dad and mom. He can't be tested in school because that's the rule. He had, we had to go out and get a test if we wanted a test. However, as a vaccinated student, non-symptomatic and a close contact, he could go to school. So we sent him to school on Tuesday. My daughter, on the other hand, as an unvaccinated close contact, had to quarantine until me was out of quarantine on the Sunday, I don't know, last Sunday. So she was out of school. We kept her out on Tuesday. And then when my wife was melting down, we said, "We're going to have her tested anyway." So we brought both kids to the doctors on Wednesday and they tested positive. So that's the situation. Like I understand where parents are frustrated because there's different rules for vaccinated and unvaccinated, and sometimes they don't make sense. And the one piece that doesn't make sense to me, and we've asked the commissioner, blatantly asked them two weeks ago, or the first week we got back, this is the second commissioners meeting, two weeks, was can the schools be allowed to test close contacts from home? And he said, "No, we're looking at the data." Because that would have meant my son could have tested in school and I wouldn't have sent, he would have, he would have come home because he would have tested positive. If I didn't have him tested, my positive son would have been in school for six days. So how many students do we have here like that right now? Asymptomatic, close contact to mom or dad? Nobody's doing anything wrong. We're following the protocols. My South Shore superintendents have drafted a note to the commissioner to say, "Can we modify our protocols?" We have not modified our protocols since they came out when we were in the heat of COVID. Things have changed with vaccination statuses. Things have changed with medications. Things are now changing with quarantines. The thing that set my wife off around the quarantine with my daughter was if my son tested positive the next week, my daughter couldn't go back to school till January 5th, okay? And she would have been out since December 7th. Now, special education, sixth grader. That's challenging for us. As a district, we are following protocols and I want to still say to parents, I hear your frustrations. I appreciate how you speak to our nurses. Our nurses are working their tails off right now. So we are following protocols. However, we are asking the department to modify as new information comes out about the variants, about the vaccination statuses, and doing some things. So we're on top of that. I do want to say, let's see, what do we have? I don't, I was going to say we've tested. I think Lisa has tested. Michelle, maybe you can correct me because it's not on my sheet here. How many, 500 tests, right? How many?
Like 500.
500 tests this year, but most have been in December. Test and stay. We're testing and staying a lot. That is working for our kids. What I would like to do is open that up more. So if, you know, Mr. Howard's daughter is a close contact from softball and not school-related, we could test her, especially if she's asymptomatic. We can keep kids in school. So we're working it as superintendents. I think DPH and Desi are working together slowly in my speed, but hopefully we'll see some modifications. But I know parents are waiting for that January 15th non-masking or unmasking. I don't know if that's going to happen or not. I know our high school's still not at the 80%. I know some high schools are at 80%. In fact, I will use my wife's school of Situate that unmasked a week ago Wednesday, last week, and are now masking on January 3rd. It was a vol, it was, they had, are at 85% and they're going back to masking. So this is a fluid situation. I'll brief you on the 5th as we go forward. I know it'll be circuit breaker, but if there's something important, I'll throw something out about COVID. As far as, just for parents, if your students are a close contact or test positive over break, I sent the letter out today. Please email Lisa Tobin. She'll get back to you, kind of explain what your process is. And then identify close contacts of your student. There really shouldn't be over break from school, but we'll work together with you to make sure your students can return to school safely. Any questions on COVID? Yes.
It's a concern now. I know you have been asking that parents send, let the nurses know if kids are vaccinated or not. How is that going? Are you getting? Because I know like, you know, personally, you know, getting the kids, like especially at the high school, to show that they've been vaccinated. Some of them haven't done that. And I know Lisa can get from the Department of Public Health. I will tell you about the Department of Public Health. When my husband got COVID and they called, they called us and talked to him, they didn't have any record of him having his vaccination, which he had way back in March, February. And they didn't have a record. The Department of Public Health didn't have that record. So I had to give them all the numbers off of the card. So there's a little disconnect too. So, you know, that's a little bit there.
So we've asked parents to submit. It's slow still.
Yeah.
Lisa still goes through the database, but that hasn't been a priority because we've been testing so many kids. It's been, it's been a triage in each nurse's office daily with, and the flu. I got to tell you too, the flu is out there huge. So that's what we got. George?
As early as today, there was something going on with our system. We have a health system, a Healthmaster it's called. And they have now, they are now offering a sync with the MIIS system, which is the one that they have to log into to see if people are vaccinated, where it will now take that information directly and go to it. So that's the next step we have to hopefully avoid a parent having to do it or something of that nature. But that's, that's coming.
How are we doing on test kits? Do we have plenty?
Plenty. Awesome. Plenty of, plenty of test and stay kits. We're in a good spot.
Do you know how the numbers roughly compare a year ago to where we're at today?
I haven't looked at it a year. I'm off on that.
I'm just curious if we know if it's similar. I know like from a state standpoint, the numbers are actually trending kind of similar to a year ago.
So if I, if you recall, I had to close the high school for two days in December last year. And we went remote. So, so I would say we're probably similar.
Okay.
With where we're at.
That was staff though, right?
Yeah, yeah, we had five staff members, yeah. So, any other questions on COVID? Okay. Next on the list is job description that I need to vote for, for a bilingual family liaison. In 2010, I would have never thought we have a need, we would have had need for a bilingual family liaison. We had nine students in district that were classified as EL. Now we're in the 90s, depending, and we could be up to 130, depending on their classification of where they're at in, in English, their fluidity in English language. This is a job description we stole from Marshfield. Marshfield just hired this person. I'm looking at getting a vote to establish this job description and then look for someone. I don't know if this person's out there. Start them at part-time. One of the, one of the reasons for this position, and I shared this with a school committee member, we have students that are coming in from Brazil. And I'll use Brazil as case point, coming in. This is their first New England winter. They've never, never known what a winter is. They don't know how to dress for a winter. And it's brand new and students are coming to school not dressed for New England. And also the culture of students in Brazil is a little bit more rough and tumble than American students. So when kids are on the playground and they're playing tag, it might be, you know, tag and push them down rather than just two-hand touch. So the students are getting into some trouble because there's nobody to explain to a parent necessarily what it's like to be in Whitman or Hanson or Massachusetts or, you know, New England to live here. So the principals have asked for this. We've also had a major uptick in registrations with parents that don't speak English. This person would serve as a translator. Right now, we're pulling our, our people that are supposed to be teaching bilingual and helping our students to translate at registration. This is, this is a position we're going to need. It might go up to a full-time position. I'm going to start it off at a part-time if you so choose to approve this job description. And I don't know if it's going to be needed long-term. I assume, yes, we're becoming a much more diverse community than we have in the past. So I'm just asking for a motion and a vote to approve this job description.
Motion to approve the position and move forward.
Second. Any questions?
I have a question.
Yeah.
How many ELs do we have in the district?
That's a good question. So we have, I think we're around the 90% of full EL, no English.
Tier one.
Yeah. And then I have kids that graduate into the limited proficiency, on and on and on. And they're classified too because I don't know if their families speak. So I, my top number that I'm looking at is like 131 and my low number is like 92. So we're in that range.
So I guess my question is knowing how, why shouldn't, I think we should just do it a full-time position to start. I understand why you might think part-time, but my concern would be that this person would be spread thin because they're going to be going to the three elementary schools, the two middle schools, and the high school, correct?
Yes. But they're not going to be actually teaching.
Right.
So I, in one respect, I understand.
Yeah.
But I kind of want to see what this rolls out into.
Before.
Before I say, "Okay, I'm committing to 40 hours a week", and then saying, "I really don't need your 40 hours a week." I think I'd say the opportunity, and this is a pilot. George, if you want to speak, come up. This is a pilot and will for like the next five months.
Yeah.
I assume this is going to be a full-time job.
Okay.
You know, I'm looking not, more not school year, like calendar year.
Yes.
So that we work with them over the summer.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the biggest, one of the biggest issues we have now is just the outreach of when new students are identified. Most of our bilingual students come to us through a connection that they already have in the district. So then that outreach has to start. We will also be, we also will be looking at the addition of additional staff because right now that's where we're severely running thin. If you are a student who comes into us, you are measured on a scale of one to six. And you're, if you're a one or a two, which is very limited, then we have to do different things throughout the day where if you're three to six, it travels. So we will also be increasing our ELL staff. But for this position, this is really the link back to the family so that we can make them comfortable, they can have a venue to answer their questions. But again, like Jeff said, I'm assuming it's going to be an outgrowth.
So Jeff, is this a, so is this a new position add or is it allocating from existing budget? Like just how does this tie us back to, tie us back to kind of the budget? Like what are you thinking?
I haven't figured out how we're going to pay for it yet.
Okay.
I want to get, I want to get the job description in first. We're going to have to allocate it from the within budget where we are and moving forward, developing where that is.
Okay.
But I want to get the job description in first. Again, I'm looking at part-time. There's some flexibility in our, in our personnel lines due to, you know, I don't want to say retirements, but sick leave. We have, we have money in our personnel line to be flexible, to add a 20-hour position right now, especially with this. Maybe not, it's not going to be $100,000 position. You know what I'm saying? But go from there.
Okay.
You somewhat just clarified. So it is part-time. Benefits or no benefits?
After 20 hours, up to 20, 19 and a half hours, the person is entitled to benefits. So it's going to be a 20-hour, 25-hour, 20, 20-plus hour position.
Okay, so there will be benefits.
Yes.
Okay. So the only additional cost if it goes full-time is not necessarily the benefit package. It's salary.
Correct. It'll be salary.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, otherwise we do have a motion. So we'll move to the vote. All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you so much. Dr. Jones. In your packet, you have some information on dress code. And Dr. Jones is going to explain. Anna Flynn kind of discussed a little bit of dress code, but Dr. Jones needs a vote from you as well tonight.
Thanks for having me tonight. I just, I'll start with what I would like for you to vote on and then I'll answer any questions or fill in anything that you have questions on. The thing that I'm looking to have you vote on is to alter or amend the student handbook to allow students the ability to wear multiple types of headgear without restriction other than adhering to the not containing obscene and profane language that create distraction and/or interference with the educational process are unacceptable to the school clauses found in other areas of the overall dress code. So in other words, this is aimed at allowing students to wear, it started with allowing students to wear durags and bonnets and other head coverings of that nature, and then is expanding to include baseball caps to make sure that we keep an equitable atmosphere within the school for everybody. As you heard, it includes wearing them that they still have to fall under, not having profane things, drug representation, swears, violence, things like that on their head, their headgear, for lack of a better term. That's pretty much our all-encompassing term. Any questions?
I certainly thank you for bringing this forward and I definitely support this change. My concern is still going back to the original dress code policy that we have in JIBC, which doesn't necessarily have the same language that is in this high school handbook. So just, not that I'm asking for any changes right now, but just referencing again what Jim Hardy had told us last year, be cautious of what you have in a handbook versus what you have in a policy because the way I read it right now, lines number one through nine technically are not enforceable because we don't have a policy per se in regards to those nine lines.
So I will tell you that the policy subcommittee of the dress code is on our, you'll see later, our scope and sequence for this year. That's one of the things that we're looking to address immediately. So we'll take, we'll hopefully take care of that.
And that is, if it's helpful, that is something that was brought up with school council and we are going to be talking about that at school council. We, we wanted to start with this, especially durags first because it came to our attention with a few students. As we've become a more diverse community, it came to our attention, some students were wearing durags in school. They were sent down for violating the handbook, for having head coverings. In speaking and listening to those students and then educating ourselves on durags and the history of durags and what they mean, we came to the conclusion that we needed to do something about it as far as allowing them to wear durags. And the idea that speaks a little bit to the policy piece and the legality piece, enforceable is something tricky that you have to go around because it, it has to create a disturbance to the educational environment. Durags do not do that. And so neither, neither really do baseball caps or hats or things like that. So we're allowing students to wear that. We checked with schools around us in the area, about 18 other schools. Many of them allow hats, some even allow hoods. And some, excuse me, have it in their handbook that they don't allow them, but they look the other way and allow students to wear them. So being of the mind that we don't want to have something in our handbook that we're not following and that we're ignoring, we wanted to adjust the handbook in this area as soon as possible and the school council will be talking about it moving forward.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Can we get a motion as presented by Dr. Jones?
So moved.
Second. Who's the move? Who's the move? Get your second. Who is the move? Michelle, you got to.
Don.
Don, all right. Excellent. All right, any further questions, comments?
Yeah. Here's a good, so just to sum it, I understand the durag part. So you're saying now kids can just wear a baseball hat that says Red Sox?
Correct.
They can, so last year they could not.
They could not last year.
And now, and what is the reasoning?
The reasoning is to make sure that everything is equal among students. We, the idea of wearing durags actually made us look at, okay, so if, if a student says, "Well, I don't typically wear a durag because of its cultural or identity ties. Maybe I want to wear my ball cap because I wear it all the time outside." So then we looked at, well, is it something that is disturbing to the educational environment or the process? And in reality, it isn't. We talked about safety issues, the idea that, well, now maybe a student's harder to, harder to identify. With the cameras that we have, we're, we're confident that we can still identify students if they do some, do something they shouldn't do. And in actuality, sometimes the hat is a better identifier than, than anything else they're wearing. In, in situations like that, we, we wanted to make sure that we were giving students an environment where they feel more comfortable to learn. And I personally, having two sons, don't allow them to wear hats inside because I'm maybe old-school about the respect thing, but that's more about me than them. And it doesn't disturb what they're doing in the process of getting educated, so.
So you think that they can basically wear anything on their head moving forward?
They can, they can wear a hat on their head moving forward as long as it's not.
No, it's just a hat. They can wear anything.
Yep. They, they can't wear a hood. The only thing in the dress code that specifically states that they can't wear is a hood. Now that's because of a safety issue and things like that and identification issues and so forth. And the dress code, we, the way we put it in there is it remains silent on it. We've seen some other dress codes that have moved to allowing more things for students and some of them have actually identified things that students are allowed to wear, which we're not ready to do something like that yet. Those dress codes were more encouraging students to wear different things that typically haven't been in, in dress codes before. This just remains silent on it by striking a few lines in the dress code and saying that hoods are not allowed. Answer your question or?
Yeah, yeah. Yes, thank you.
I mean, it's certainly a change in tradition, right? I mean, I can, I can remember like going back to school, like God forbid I wore a hat into school. Like that was not going to go over well. But as we evolve and times change, sometimes that's, you get to question traditions. And the more we can allow students to feel like they're representing who they are, then the better off we're probably all going to be. So I think as we look at the dress code, that's, you know, we probably need to question though, are we just doing this because it's always been that way? Or are we doing this because it makes sense and allows kids to feel comfortable? So like Mike, I have a hard time like picturing the hallways with kids wearing their hats.
Native American.
But you know what? They wear hats everywhere, everywhere else. So to your point, if it's not a distraction to the learning environment, what are we trying to do? Are we trying to make kids look a certain way or allow them to be themselves? So it's, it's, you'll have to let us know how it goes.
Well, it's interesting that you said that because one of the things that we ask schools when we ask them what they're doing is have there been issues? And across the board, they all said they haven't had any issues with it. A couple said they noticed a bump because, hey, we get to do this now. So the students all extra wore hats. We noticed that a little bit with the durags. We moved on the durags quicker and then put this official for all headgear, waiting for your approval on this. And then we noticed a bump in durags first couple of days. And now it's just the students that were wearing them before. I'm sure we'll notice a bump in, in baseball caps, maybe winter hats for the first few days, and then it'll go away. The novelty will wear off.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Okay. Any other comments, questions? Okay, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor? Anyone opposed, abstaining? Unanimous.
Thank you very much.
So this is effective now?
Effective immediately.
Okay, so the Monday, you'll get the Monday after break will be your?
I got my hat on backwards.
Everyone's going to have to update their holiday list.
New hats for everyone.
Okay, the next item was the annual agenda. I think just a quick update to make sure everyone knows that that was updated. The only updates are what we just voted for the student advisory committee to just make sure everyone's aware that they will be coming to the January, sorry, February, April, and June meetings. So those are the only items that were added to that.
Okay, I'm going to bounce to goals. So we're almost at the midpoint. I just kind of want to give you an idea of where we're at. Trying, at every meeting, we talk a little bit about different things that are happening in the district. I don't directly say, this is goal number one, this is goal number two. So in the past, I've talked about meeting with parents. I met with parents in October, November, December, three, two, two, or three, two, three. I've met with a total of, you know, seven parents, or, yeah, let me do the math. Eight parents, great meetings. Like, I go in and we don't have a standing agenda. It's just a dialogue back and forth. Brought up some issues I was able to help resolve, brought up some things I couldn't resolve but could get them some information. I'll continue to do that as we go forward. I've met with students, at the high school students, my superintendent's advisory every month. I met with the Hanson School Council. Some of the elementary school councils haven't been, weren't formed. They're like just being formed late November, early December. So my month of January and February are booked with students. I'll continue to do the massive parent outreach. Plan to meet with PTOs in January and February. I know we are on for, I think, the first Thursday with the Hanson PTO already, Mr. Scriven and Mr. Howard. Last month, I know it was relatively long, but we did that entire MTSS, Multi Tiered System of Support, presentation with, for regular education students and special education students, trying to tie together with the support of this committee, why we have interventionists, what they do, so that we can make sure our students are all moving forward, not just the students that need to recover or students that struggle. The MTSS support system includes all our students. So interventions can go district wide, really grades one through 12. Also highlighting what we do for our special education students. So you saw that presentation, MTSS was one of my goals this year. I'm going to be reporting out where we are after the mid-year assessment and then the final assessment for where our students are at. Early childhood, I know we have an advisory committee, but Full Day K was one of our goals, one of my goals. So just let me give you an idea of where we're at right now. I put together a small team, Mr. Stanbrook's on the team, Dr. Foley's on the team as an elementary principal. And I'm looking at, my process right now is looking at enrollment data from 2017 through now and our NESDEC projections in the future. I need to assess in that timeframe what our first grade class looks like so that I can see how many kids I'm going to need classrooms for tuition free Full Day K. So taking in our kids from kindergarten, Full Day K, tuitioned in, half day kids who are not tuitioned in, and kids who maybe are somewhere else, but all come to school in first grade, now looking to see what those average numbers look like so I can present to you in a budget what Full Day K, what our needs might be for class sizes. Mr. Stanbrook's looking at the same piece for numbers, for for finances, meaning 2019, 2020, and 21, 2021 were not good years for us to look at our numbers for kindergarten tuition. When we went out for the pandemic, parents didn't pay from March to June. We ended up absorbing those costs because we had teachers and kids were still taking classes. When we were split last year in hybrid, many parents didn't send their kids to school. So last year's another year to not look at the money. So we're looking at our dollars this year for revenues, comparing it to 17, 18, 18, 19. So then again, we can put together some numbers for a budget presentation to show you folks what it's going to cost and how it's going to be sustainable. Darlene's looking with the principals to say, do we have existing space? If we do add a classroom, are we going to have to shift, you know, a grade or teacher to another classroom in each building? So they're working at the intricacies of what this is going to look like at the building level. My plan moving forward in that is, I'm going to meet with the PTOs, kind of briefly outlining in January what our budget might look like. And I don't, it's not going to be specific. You guys can get the specifics, but say, hey, look, Full Day K is going to be an expense. Our one-to-one initiative is an expense and we'll kind of, you know, tell them a little bit about some of our needs in January. In February, I'll present to you folks exactly what our budget's going to look like. I assume in the next, you know, it seems in budget season, we'll meet every other day, but really every other week, it'll be up to this committee to say, hey, look, if Full Day K's this much money, are we going to assign that to the district as a district expense? Are we going to dip in for the first year to E and D to cover those costs, to absorb it? And unbeknownst to me, I was on a meeting with other superintendents and the ARPA funds that are out there, the American Rescue Plan Act, gives money to towns. I haven't talked to our town administrators at all. I haven't really dove into this, but I did look at the Plymouth County website on ARPA and monies can be assigned from the federal grant that the towns get to provide for early education for students. So that might be something we can work at. It's not a guarantee, but I just want to put that out there to you for you folks because that's going to be a decision that you make to see how we fund Full Day K. District budget, wherever, and again, Mr. Stanbrook's numbers will show what we have. Then after we decide that, it's going to be a full court press to parents in February. These parents that are coming in to register their children for Full Day K, I'm going to tell them, it's in the budget proposal. It's one of our goals. I don't know if it's going to pass at town meeting. I don't know if the committee's going to pull it out, but here's two examples. Can come in Full Day, at a tuition still, or this is going to be the opportunity for next year. Talk to those parents and then I'll hit the PTOs again in some community meetings to just talk about our school budget, in particular overall, but highlighting the fact that one of the goals from the committee, one of my goals was Full Day K. So that's the process for Full Day K. Building project was another one of my goals. Just want to give you an idea of where we're at. So we have put together a contract and Ms. Stafford, Mr. Scrivens on the building committee. We have a very active building committee. We put together a proposal for operators, for an owner's project person. We hired actually a company. The committee decided on a company. We put together a contract with our subcommittee, meaning Mr. Stanbrook, Mr. Heineman, Mr. Curran, negotiated a contract with our OPM. They were willing to sign it. This was in early November. Whitman Town Council looked at the contract and there was a discussion between myself, the town administrator, Mr. Heineman, and town council about me adding some amendments to the contract that MSBA has assigned. So we were on a conference call, I think Thursday, November 4th. The town council from Whitman discussed with MSBA the amendments. MSBA was resistant to some of those amendments because their contract is a standard contract for owner's project manager. But they took all the amendments and were in discussion with their, what they called general counsel at MSBA. Last Thursday, I was notified, Mr. Heineman was notified, Whitman Town Council was notified that MSBA has rejected those amendments. So we're at a, I don't know if I have a contract yet or not with the owner's project manual. I'm not sure. My meeting with MSBA regarding where we move forward is January 10th. There's a thought, there will be a meeting, I believe, the week of, the week we come back from break with the building committee to discuss these issues and where we stand. I know we received the narrative that we had to resubmit to MSBA with corrections. We received that today. Mr. Stanbrook and I are working on the narrative as well and have to resubmit that. Nothing major, but just some typo changes and some questions they had in it. But right now, I don't want to say we're at a standstill, but we're in a little bit of limbo about the contract. MSBA attorneys did say that Whitman Town Council could add a couple of lines on the first page of the contract. And some of the questions around the general contract was ownership of the fields, who owns it, the district, the town. And those are some real valid questions that town council had raised. That's just an overview of where we're at and I wanted to share that because again, it's a goals update for me. This is one of our goals, the project, which will be, I hope to have done and approved and all go forward after feasibility and we can have a new building in the next five to six years. But we still have to get a project manager. And MSBA will decide whether or not they support our choice for project manager on January 10th. So a little background again, we pick someone and then MSBA kind of says, okay, you can use that company. Because they know all the companies out there and they know their jobs and how much stuff they're doing. And they don't want us to choose a company that might not be able to handle our project. So they vet that company as well because they're investing almost, you know, 57% or whatever the number is right now in finances for this project. So I will update you as we go, but that's where we are with the Whitman Middle School, school building project. Covered ECE, yeah, sure.
So just if I heard you right, so the town of Whitman agreed to hire the owner's project manager. That's not?
The building committee.
The building committee, sorry. Okay. And what's in question is the contract that MSBA drafts with the town because it's going to be a town building?
Yes. So MSBA, and John, maybe you can answer this. John was on the negotiating. MSBA has a standard contract for owner's project manual, or for owner's project manager, which John and Lincoln used.
Okay.
The company agreed to that contract. Whitman Town Council had some questions and wanted to add some things to the contract. MSBA came back with, this is our standard contract for every building project. So we had a very constructive, good dialogue with those folks. I'm good, John. Thank you though. Good conversation. That was on November 4th. Thursday, whatever date that was last week is when they told us they're not going to support those amendments. They did draft some language to say, this is what you can do. But I, and I had, I talked to the town administrator and said, I'm just waiting to hear from your attorney what your thought process is. We'll have something in place, but I want to update the committee where we're at. The building committee knows all of this. We communicated back and forth through email multiple times on where we stand. We weren't able to have a building committee meeting over this timeframe. I assume we're going to have one prior to the January 10th. And then I'll update the committee at our next meeting after that. Okay, so I have that. One of the school committee goals is the robust related arts. Our committee, I spoke to Chris Scriven the other day, our committee hasn't met, will meet sometime in January or February to talk about related arts. And then my other goal is equity. Right now, we are in the process of looking at the equity audit we had done. There's multiple things we can look at. First, you know, and I will say, student equity, faculty, staff equity in our hiring process, which we're also teaming up with DESI. We are part of the Influence 100 cohort. Dr. Jones and Dr. Jocelyn are part of, are two participants in that. Influence 100 assists districts in promoting leaders from within, people of color, people who are not of color, but leaders to look, you know, to work together to become superintendent, assistant superintendent. DESI also helps us too in our hiring practices, giving us best practice to look for diversity in our employment ranks. We struggle as a district to bring in people who don't look like me, who don't speak like me. We struggle to look for a diverse workplace. I think one of my goals is to get that better and move us forward to making sure students who are different, who are of color, have like personnel to look like them. We've done an okay job in athletics. This year, we've hired some folks who are of color, which is outstanding. And we've got to do better. So it's one of our goals and I'm looking at every avenue to try to bring folks in for teaching positions, for para positions, for coaching positions, for administrative positions, so that we have some diversity within our workforce. So those are the five goals that I have going on right now. I'll brief you more as we go. Again, I don't want to spend a, you know, this is goal number one, this is standard one. You folks know what's going on in the district and I try to infuse different things in school committee meetings. Any questions?
Yeah, just one of the things that you talked about, the equity. MTA has been working on that for years. And this is not Whitman-Hanson, this is the whole entire state. Actually, it's the whole entire nation. And when we were looking at it, it was very, very difficult. Even at MTA headquarters had a problem with diversity, trying to get that. So I just want people to understand, you know, it's not Whitman-Hanson. This is throughout, you know, throughout the state, throughout the nation, that there is a problem getting equity. And my thing is, I see it getting worse, not better, because of the people leaving the profession. And so I think it's, you know, it is, it's a tough go. And, you know, I know you're trying to do the best you can, but you are not alone. So we are not alone.
We know that. And we've talked on the South Shore. I just think we're looking at every avenue we can to bring in people who are diverse, diverse speakers, people who look different, so that we have a very diverse faculty, staff, support staff for our students. And I think it's important. Any other questions on goals? Okay, George, you ready to do summer programs?
So summer programs, we were asked to sort of try to start this a little bit earlier, get you some updates. And I guess the first thing I'm here to say is I have no definites, but I have some points that I want to share with you. We've been meeting with the principals on this topic and I can say that all schools are planning to run summer programs. I will say this to you, the dates, well, let me start with this. The preschool and high school have their own clearly defined summer programs based on their existence. The high school is things like the science camp, sports camps, 3D printing, our transitional program for students that we identify that might be struggling as they leave eighth grade, coming into the high school. All of those things will still take place. All right, preschool has a clearly defined special ed support program for our preschoolers who are in need. Those will stay the same. When we look at the other schools, they will have a program. Those programs will be varied and they will consist of an academic component. Those dates, the average date range for those programs will be July 6th to July 29th, and they will occur in the morning hours. So when I say in the morning hours, they're going to occur for staff somewhere between eight to 12, or eight 30 to 12 30, and for students, about three and a half hours in that time to four hours. Depending on size and the scope of the program, all programs may be free or come at a cost. And this is why. We have put district funds aside so that we can support four staff members and a coordinator at each site. Now, some programs are bigger than that. Some programs might struggle to fill that. But that is where, when we talk about cost, that is where we're at at this point in time. And the example I will use is, in my past, we used to have a active summer program at the Whitman Middle School that at one point in time, we had about 19 staff. So what that would happen then is that the district funds would go to that whole program, they'd run it as they need, drop the price of everyone, and/or keep a portion aside for those that have specific needs where they could go for free. Those details have not been worked out. However, on the other hand, you might have a school where all they have is two or three staff. That could be funded completely if the numbers of students who enroll are such that that's the number of staff that they may need. Busing, I've also put aside busing. The number one thing with busing is that drivers, it's not in their contract to do it. So they have to opt to do it and we have to find drivers. Right now, you all know the trails and trials of bus drivers in the United States. So we are hopeful that we can do that. I don't know the roots yet. I don't know if we'd stagger, let's say, you know, 20 minutes for the end of a program where they go to Conley, then maybe to Duval, get those kids and that could be one bus based on the numbers in need. But those are all the pieces we're trying to work on. The biggest issues we have are, will the schools have the support of their teachers in order to do it? This is outside of the contract and this is sort of, this is a voluntary signup if you do get compensated, but this is on your time. When Beth talks about the number of people leaving the district and you talk about the struggle of going back to school in a COVID pandemic, I don't know if we'll have the staff to do it. But what I can say is, and you asked for it, we have dates, we have parameters, we have a shell. And as we move forward, I will have, I will flesh those out as best I can. So if you're a person who's watching today and you are looking for something for your children come the summer, ballpark July 6th to July 29th in the mornings, ballpark free or at lowest cost as we can do it. And we are also hopeful that there'll be some form of transportation going along with it. It's the best I have right now.
I think the crucial piece that George alluded to, not only transportation, is staffing. I mean, we struggled last year to fill summer programs with staff because people are tired. An example of staffing, the commissioner went as far as saying, seniors in good standing should be relieved of classes for second semester so they can assist down at the elementary schools. Okay? So uncertified students who haven't, we have a two-year for, to be a substitute teacher here, you're supposed to have 60 credit hours or two years of college and associate's degree. Commissioner has kind of pulled back and say, if you have seniors in good standing, let them go substitute teach at an elementary school, let them be a para, let them be this. We haven't done that. Now, we've had students who've done internships, but not compensated. And DESI has said, either the district can compensate them or DESI can give us some funds to compensate. We haven't done that because, again, we try to, I want to say we have a standard a little bit. You know, going for your bachelor's degree, you're just not a high school senior who, you know, wants to teach and goes into a classroom. Staffing's going to be an issue potentially in the summer. It might not be. People might be like, this is great. I want to make a couple extra bucks. It's only in the month of July. If we have, if we have a light winter and we're out, when we're supposed to be out, teachers might buy into it. But don't be shocked that it's going to be harder to fill these positions with our regular teachers who are, you know, Conley program with Conley teachers. We might be shifting across the district, but we'll keep you updated. But those are the things that concern us the most. Go ahead.
Thank you for providing the dates. It's important. And the idea of transportation is really helpful, except unless you are a working parent, right? So you can't have a bus come and pick your child up and drop off in the middle of the day if it's a younger student. So I'm wondering how we can make the best use of our one-time money, ARPA funds, or ESER III, to possibly extend that day for full day. And again, I understand limited staff. You know, we don't know who's going to be able to.
And I think some of this is ESER III money that we've set aside for it already, some of those portions, so we can do it over one year, more than one year. But I know that in the past, what has happened in the past is that you might have a camp type setting in the morning and then you would have lunch. So we had our former cafeteria director do something at one site. And then so kids from other sites went to one site and then they had like a sports or crafts afternoon. Those things can all be looked at. I believe we can look at those once we though identify, are we going to have enough to man or have personnel enough to do those programs? Also in the past, we used to pair with then the Whitman Town Rec Program, the Rec, yeah, the Whitman Rec Department. So what used to happen sometimes is that the bus would drop them off at the park where they had that. So all of those things will So all of those things will be in play, but I think we have to, well, I'm trying to shore up the first, so we can see what the overspill and what the needs are at the second. But no, all of those things, what you just mentioned is what used to happen at the Whitman Middle School when I was there, because there was that need and there were parents there. But it only arose because we had such an active program in the morning. So that's what we're trying to start.
Right.
But no, those are good questions in there. Has been ESER III money set aside for this, so that we can at least get to this point right now.
Yeah. I feel like if there was ever a year to really fund this, if we have the staff, that's always the variable, right? It's the year that the students have been back in school, getting that routine and trying to keep some semblance of routine throughout the summer. Two other points, if we can make sure that this is all centrally located on the website so parents can register online, because I know there's been, you know, in the past, oh, I heard about the science program at the high school. I don't know where that flyer is. I don't know. So can we have a central registration and a reminder that even if it's a, regardless of which elementary school you go to, the programs are open to all district-wide students?
So yes, just to update, I mean, I don't want to talk as much as Jeff does, but I want to say that we now have a new portal with Infinite Campus that we're just finalizing to be able to take online payments, and you can do something like at a school storefront. So even if you aren't registered yet, or you're not fully involved in Infinite Campus, you can still do that. So that'll be underway this spring, so that should be available. The one caution I would have, or the one piece, is we might just have to have a link back to the individual school, because depending on the type of program and depending on the, if there is a cost, some of that cost is absorbed in the revolving account of the school building. And then so, in order for payroll purposes, so we just have to work those things out.
Even if there's just, you know, register for summer here, and then it links to the next page and has the breakup, fine.
Yeah, we'll definitely.
Yeah, making it easy for parents is key.
Good suggestion.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, George. Fun times, Mr. Sandbrook, budget.
All right. Thank you. Excuse me, thank you. Good evening, everybody. Just real quickly, on the first thing was the year-to-date reports. So that's the one that's labeled 14, sorry, 413 budget reports, year-to-date report. It's the monthly report that I've been sending out every month. It has the revenues and the expenditures through November 30th on it. Just a quick review of the revenues, which are on page one. We've received about half of the operating assessments from both towns, and also about half of the non-mandated bussings from both towns. And down on the bottom for a total is, through November, is $25.9 million, again rounding the numbers off. So that's what we've gotten for revenues. On the expenditures, again, I've broken down the expenditures by function to try to make it a little bit easier to follow. And again, this is the way that the DESI wants to see reports to them, so might as well, you know, it's good to be using this format because it flows right into DESI's reports. So again, the expenditures, there's 19 pages here. If you go through all the way to page 19 at the end, the total expenditures through November are $21 million. Sorry, it's page 18 is that total. $21,235,240, 43. And again, $7.9 million, again rounding the numbers off, our encumbrances, and those are money that have been pledged for expenses, but they haven't yet been paid. So that's the normal monthly report. As a corollary to that, there's another page that I was doing. I brought, I think I brought this up for the first time at the last meeting. It's labeled 413 budget reports, year-to-date reports, part two. It's a one-pager. It's a list of all the deficits that are on this report as of November 30th. We talked about the last meeting that I was going to be going through each one of them and trying to find out what's going on, and whether it was a legitimate deficit, or it's just a mistake somewhere that it needs to be fixed. And I'm working through it, but I haven't completed that yet. So right now, there are 19 accounts that are still in deficit. If all of them are legit, like you see some of them here, need a transfer in the FAR column. It says no, that means that I know what it is, and I'm going to correct it. I just haven't had a chance to do it yet. But theoretically, if all 19 were amounts that were legitimate deficits, that total would be $337,000 down the bottom, and with a budget of fiscal year '22, budget of $56.79 million, it would be 0.59%. But again, I was hoping to have this ready to go for this meeting, but I've had a couple setbacks, so I haven't been able to get to this. So I'm hoping to get this for the next meeting. Everything that says under review here will be a yes or a no, and then we can talk about whether or not, you know, how we can handle these transfers that may or may not come. Do we want to do them now? Do we want to wait till the end of the year? Do we want to wait till we get more? Whatever we want to do. On the quarterly report, with, so I was supposed to do a September quarterly report, and I did not do a September quarterly report. So I, what I could do, I posted, this is the quarterly report, part one, I gave you, and then it's a one-page report. It was a comparison of the balance sheet items, revenue expenditure comparisons, and fund balance activity through, I did it through November, but if you'd like, I could go back and do one in September and then do one in December. So we do have a quarterly, true quarterly report. This is something I wanted to run by the budget subcommittee, but again, we haven't been able to meet because of me being out. So this is something that would, seems like it would be, you know, if I went over this every quarter, it might be something that might be useful. I can go through this, if you want, through November real quickly here, but on the balance sheet comparisons, I've condensed down all the accounts. You don't have to see every single account. I've grouped them into like amounts so that I could get it on one page. So with cash on balance sheet, cash is king. Everyone knows what cash is, and cash is up $105,000 from last year through November. So if you see that line there where it says cash, $7.6 million in fiscal year '21 through November. Fiscal year '22 through November is $7.7, so it's up 105 grand, or 1.37%. So that's how to read this as we go forward. So this means that we're about $101,000 up over where we were last year. Under the revenue and expenditure comparisons, again, I grouped the revenues into like amounts, and then expenditures by function. And this is the breakdown, and again, some of these things might be related to what's called timing. We paid something in October last year, and we didn't pay it until December this year. We won't pay it till December. So I can, you know, some of the things may not be exactly one-to-one, but this is where we are through November and the comparison through last year. Down the bottom there, if you see revenues over and under expenditures, we're $733,000 more in spending, sorry, less than where we were in fiscal year '21. So we're down a little bit. And the fund balance is down the bottom. That's just where, it's another part of the balance sheet and where the numbers come from there. Again, they add up to the $101,000. So I guess the overview, the one sentence overview is, we're running comparatively about the same, a little bit more, 1% more than last year. And that's kind of where we are. Again, if that's a useful report, I can run that through the budget subcommittee next time we can meet. If it isn't useful, I don't have to do it. But this is something that I could do every month, and then maybe talk about it every quarter. Would that stand for a quarterly report? I'm not sure. But that's something for discussion at a later date. The part two of the quarterly report, if this is useful, is a list of every other fund, other than the general fund, which is on this page. This is the general fund. Every other fund that's in the town's, on the town's general ledger would be on this report. And it starts with the beginning balance at the beginning of the year, the revenues that's taken in through the year, the expenditures that have come out of each fund, and then the ending balance as of the date. Again, this report that I gave you is through November. If you like, I could go back and do a September and a December. I could do this every month. It doesn't take a lot if you find it useful. So these are, again, they're broken out by special revenue funds. What are special revenue funds? There are grants, revolving funds, gifts, and food service or school lunch, which is kind of a hybrid of those things, but that's also a special revenue fund. So those are all one, that's all one type of special revenue funds, of those type things. Then the next, on page two, down the bottom, are the capital projects, you know what capital projects are. And then the next group is trust funds, and then finally, agency funds. So this is where we started, you know, at the beginning of the year, and then where we are through November. So again, I don't know if you've seen stuff like that before, but if you haven't, then maybe this is new, and I can take some questions, or if you want to digest it, whatever you'd like to do there. But that's something that, you know, I could give every month, maybe post on the website every month, if we decide if that's a good idea. And maybe I could just talk about it every quarter, and what I see as highlights or lowlights are things that we need to worry about. So again, that's the part on the quarterly report.
John, maybe for now, just so we can give you, I know you're looking for some clarity from us, so it might be something that it may make sense to just post quarterly, so maybe pick some quarterly timelines. Certainly, I think the more information we have, the better, but I think if you do a quarterly update, maybe post something to the website quarterly so that once a quarter, everyone can see what's going on, because it's not like something's going to happen in a month prior that it's not going to be picked up in the quarterly reports. But that's one person's opinion, so I don't know if that makes sense to everyone. But I think if you share them once a quarter and then talk about them once a quarter, that would be super helpful because, you know, maybe if, I don't know, Sean's sitting at home, he can pull up the quarterly report while we're talking about it, and he can see what's going on as we're talking about it. I think for some folks, that would be helpful.
And that sounds great, and I just wanted to mention something else really quickly is that, of course, these are un-audited. And if I, you know, if you go month to month, there may be a change, because I might catch something that's a mistake, and I fix it. So if you take September, and then you look at December, and you say, oh, what happened? There's nothing going wrong. I found a mistake and I fixed it. So that's kind of, you know, just have that caveat that's out there.
Does that sound good for everyone? We'll do it once a quarter, make sure the information we see it, the public sees it, everyone can have it. Awesome.
And then finally, is an unpaid bill.
This one, we're probably need to pass over, so, because we are short. So we only have eight, and I think based upon the guidance you had given me, we need nine to vote this.
Well, we need nine tenths.
Over the full committee, though.
I think it's nine tenths of the full committee. I think we played, I think we brought it before, so we can pass over that one.
Do you want me to discuss it or not?
So we'll just pass over. We'll just have to put it on the January, let's not put it on the fifth, let's put it on the 12th agenda. It looks like it's a bill from June, so what's another two weeks? And then as far as the budget subcommittee, let us know when you want to meet, because I know we didn't meet. So I know, as Jeff alluded to, budget's right around the corner. So I think we'll leave it to you, but just shoot, Steve gave it myself a note. Let us know when you want to meet next to talk about the budget. We will schedule a budget subcommittee meeting, whatever timeline we agreed to, a week and a half before the January 12th meeting, so we'll schedule that one. But if you want to start talking about any of the budget materials or any of these materials, just let us know, and we're happy to meet.
That would be on the day of the circuit breaker meeting, too.
So maybe we'll do it early. But yeah, we'll coordinate that. I'll follow up. We'll definitely do that one. So let us know if you want to have an additional meeting other than the one to prepare for the next school committee meeting.
Okay.
Okay? Any questions for John before he takes off?
John, you could, oh, I'm sorry. You could probably do a summer program for us. I mean, with all the thorough information you have, you can probably teach us all a lesson. This is very good, though. I know you say it's standard practice. It's very informative, and it's very helpful, so thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Boyce, thank you, because I think John is very thorough. And we're trying to give you as much information as we can, and that's something that we haven't been able to do in the past.
It's amazing. It really is, and we are very blessed, so we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Where are we? Field trip for boys? Do you have an update?
Yep. So in your packet, it was requested for some more clarification on the field trips for boys' basketball, girls' basketball. So Mr. Rogers provided you this information, their travel itinerary, what they have planned, and they're off to Florida after Christmas. Any questions? Never mind.
Donations, donations and gifts. So I think just for awareness, there was a letter that I think you sent to Northeastern Savings Bank. I think we had thanked them last time, and I think that was just in our package, so we knew the letter went out.
Yep.
Thanking them? Yes. We already accepted it. That's all said.
Mrs. Palm, right?
We thanked them. We'll thank them again. That was very nice.
Thank you.
Duval.
Duval, $2,500.
Awesome. And then we do have a donation from our very own Stephen Boyce. I think it's a Chromebook Asus C223N that he wishes to donate.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris. And I looked it up. So this is my second year, and I don't want to be a big ham about it, and so. I really do want to continue to do this. One of these is going to my three-year-old nephew. He's actually three and a half, but he told me, he straightened me out, he said, Uncle, I'm three. So he's getting that on Christmas Day. Other than that, I do want to donate this. I brought it last time, talked with George, I looked up the number, the C23N. I don't know if the N really makes a difference, but it would be good until like, I think, sometime in 2024. You know, it sounds like that's around the corner, too, but at least that's three, four years out of it and so forth. But, you know, this district has been really my home because it taught me a lot. And from everyone we hear from, whether it's a John or a George, any of you folks, Anna, you know, any of the other advisory council parents, it'll always be my home and always mean a lot to me. So it might not be a $2,500 Chromebook by any means, but.
Take it.
Let's just keep thinking of the kids, so.
Thank you, Mr. Boyce.
Thanks for doing that. So just so we're formal, can I get a motion from someone to accept the donation, Mr. Boyce?
Second.
Any discussion, other than all of us saying thank you? All those in favor? Great, unanimous.
Thanks, Mr. Boyce.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Just briefly, capital projects update. So we voted our capital matrix in October. I sent it off to Ms. Green, Mr. Heineman. I spoke to Lincoln the other day. The capital committee in Whitman still, I don't want to say still, but hasn't met. And Mr. Lincoln said he was going to get me a form. He's still working on a form to better distribute that information that we sent to him, to the capital committee. He did kind of say, well, you ladies are looking for a lot, we can't afford it all. I said, I understand, but we also wanted to give you a matrix of things that we need over the next five years, so that both communities have an understanding of where we sit. And we will continue to update that matrix quarterly, and we can continue to share it with this committee as things get approved at town meeting, things are purchased by the district, just so that they have an idea. The other piece of that capital projects piece, we talked about playgrounds. So I did have a conversation with Representative Sullivan. She is looking at an earmark in the governor's budget for playgrounds. She was a little shocked at how much they might cost, but we're looking for that. I will update the facility subcommittee and then this committee in January regarding playgrounds. We did have that assessment. I had to ring Ernie a little bit because I hadn't seen it, and lo and behold, the woman that did the assessment got really hurt in an accident. I think she fell off a cliff, like really hurt. So she was delayed in doing that piece. I do have that document now. I will share it with facility sub, and then share it with you guys, what her thought processes are, the costs of all the playgrounds moving forward. So we can either update the capital matrix, looking at, again, our funding, ARPA funding, other funding that's in the communities from the state, from the Fed. There, there, there happens to be a lot of funding right now from a variety of sources, uh, outside of our, our towns and our district to look at some, some capital items like this. So I will continue to update you with that. But just so you, you know, I think it's on the, on the master, um, calendar. Hanson, the capital projects was due in, in January, they already have them. Whitman, we looked at October, they already have them. Now we'll be talking to them about, you know, making sure that we, we on the same page with what they can afford and what, and what our specific needs are in, in capital. That's all I had for, for an update with, with capital. Any questions at all?
So we ended up with two 17s. Can you take North River and, or who's doing North River?
Yeah, I've got, oh, I'm sorry, yep. So North River Collaborative and South Shore Collaborative, I'm on the board of directors. Uh, we are member districts. In your packets, and I think online was the North River Annual Report, it was too big. The South Shore Annual Collaborative Annual Report, just reading items for you, um, just so you know what they, where they are. We're both, they're both collaboratives that are doing well financially. They did notice a dip in enrollment, um, during COVID, but right now we have needs and all member schools have needs to, to make sure our students are being serviced at the collaborative. So just reading items really for you folks, those annual reports. I'm good.
Okay, uh, next item is member town audit. So I just wanted to put this on the agenda because we haven't really talked about this and make sure everyone was kind of aware of, of what was going on. So in both selectmen's meetings in both towns, there's been some discussion about, um, this actually dates back, I think, a couple of years ago. It was first discussed and I think it's been approved in at least one town, if not both. Um, where the towns had, um, voiced the thought of doing an additional audit on the district in terms of the financial operations. Um, so I want to kind of talk this through a little bit. So, and I kind of wanted to share at least my perspective and then we can kind of talk through it and see if there's anything we want to do together, because we had talked, I talked to Jeff about this too. So from, from my perspective, I think, um, I would encourage both towns to do the audit, right? I think we've certainly identified some things. I think John has identified some things in terms of things that we can do better as a district. So for me, I'd really like to support, um, or show support to the towns in doing that audit. Because one of two things are going to happen. We're either going to get an audit and it's going to show that there isn't any additional items to look at, or we're going to flush all this out as John is presently doing and flushing these items out and identify things that are going to make us better or things that we need to improve. So, um, I'm very much in favor of the towns doing that audit and us supporting that. And I'm sure there'd be some resources in terms of, you know, they're going to need some information. I would take it a step further and actually say, because we're going to use the audit and as a gesture of good faith, I'd, I'd like for us to consider actually absorbing a third of the cost. I don't think it's a massive cost. I think they're talking about, if I got it right, $30,000, $40,000. So we would take a third. I would recommend that they do the audits independently. We're not going to try and direct them, let them do the audits. We should get the results and when it's all said and done, I, I would, I would recommend us giving them back a third total. So we each split it a third, a third, a third, and the funding source would be E and D. Um, so I wanted to kind of present that to the committee for thoughts. Uh, and then ultimately potentially even just motion that as letting the towns know that we're in support. And when it's all said and done, if they could give us a report, the final report, and, uh, we would be willing to reimburse them a total of a third of the cost. So I leave that for you as a committee to consider. We can just say we're going to support it and leave the cost out of it, or we can do the cost as well. So thoughts?
I like the.
Steve?
I like the idea of making it a third and a third and a third. I don't want anyone to walk away and think like, well, they're paying into it, that's, you know, how would someone view that? But I think the thought here is, I know the thought here is, is not to leave the total burden on the towns. Because we're not a burden anyways. We're, we're, we're looking to always work in, in collaboration. Jeff has said that from the beginning. Um, I think we've done a wonderful job. Yeah, we've had our differences and we've had to speak out in different ways on different things. But, you know, we all come together in the end and I think this is the, the same type of thing. We're coming together, we're pulling, you know, in all of our resources, they're pulling all their resources. We're just going to know. I think it's a good thing.
Other thoughts? Or would anyone like to make a motion to that effect for me?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, further discussion? Yeah?
I'd echo what.
So I'm sorry, the motion, let me clarify the motion. We should clarify what the motion is. What is the motion, Steve?
So the motion is to.
Support and revert.
Once we got finalized, be it independent audits or whatever you want to call them, um, that, and the towns will have the realization of their costs, that we would contribute one-third or whatever the total dollar amount is, um, to those audits.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, Don, go ahead.
Yeah, I echo what Steven said, that when we agree to pay for a portion of it, even if it's reimbursement, it could be seen that we have play in the results or something. So I, it kind of worries me a little on that perception. I wholeheartedly welcome the audit and open doors. I think it will restore public confidence in our community. Because there have been so many questions over the past two years, so that by all means, please come, you know, send the auditors. But it's going to be a tremendous amount of work. I, I work in the professional field of accounting and audits, so I know the labor and time intense that it takes. So, and, and that's going to fall on our district's central office shoulders. But again, I think it's so important that we should do it. My, my, you know, it's not going to be either town with their town hall, you know, working on the other side of this audit. It will be the auditing firm working with our central office. So I, yeah, I struggle with that payment piece just over the public perception. Not that I disagree with us as a, um, you know, the three, the, the district and two member towns working together, collaborating and so forth. I completely agree on that.
So I really appreciate you bringing that up, because I think it's important to share publicly that, again, what we're doing is we're not, we're not selecting the auditor.
Right.
We're not setting the scope of the audit. The towns would do that, we're going to let them run their process.
And they will hire the auditors.
That's for the towns to do. All we're saying is when you're done.
Right, right.
Give us the bill.
Send us one-third of the bill.
So it's, that's a very different, and that's not, hey, we're going to be a third partner in the scope or what's being looked at or the other thing. And I think, Don, to my point, to your point, spending a lot of time in audits, like I, I think I had half as many gray hairs on my head, professionally speaking, before all the audits. It's amazing how many audits we do in the banking world. But, um, I almost view this almost as like a consulting opportunity, right? They're going to come in, they're going to look. And so I look at what John's doing and I see him looking at this and this and this. And so it's the pain now of him continually doing piece, piece, piece. Or it's, we go through this, this is another review, and we're going to learn something that, again, is either going to make us better or not. So that's the thing.
Jeff, if I could.
Yep.
One last question. There are lots of different types of audits too.
Yep.
So we do an audit every year. Chair Hayes has said that in the past, right? We, we have the audit come forward, so maybe it's helpful to explain that. That, in, in my view, and please correct me, that type of audit is really to look and protect against fraud, right? That's for internal controls, you know, money that comes in and money that goes out. Is it being paid correctly to proper contractors and invoices? So that's really, and, and from what I understood, looking at fraud, not necessarily looking at the district and how it uses its money in other ways. So maybe we can clarify that right now, what type of audit we're asking the towns to come and do?
I think it's whatever one they're looking to do. And I think they're looking at financial operations and they're looking at trying to identify some of the issues that have been uncovered over the last couple of years and flushing that all through now. So I think we're trying to just get by this surprises of, you know, we had an assessment issue. We have some, you know, things that John has identified in terms of how we're doing circuit breaker. If there are other things that we can identify, I guess what I'm looking at is let's get them all flushed out now. The financial audit from our audit firm, I think is another conversation that we also need to have, but I'm going to ask to have that conversation after we have the circuit breaker conversation.
Okay.
In terms of CLA and what they do for an audit and perhaps maybe us thinking about, maybe we should have a different firm come in and look at things for a fresh set of eyes perspective. But I think that, to me, the sequence of that is let's get through the circuit breaker conversation and then we can have that conversation.
I would just, um, implore you and your thoughts and reflections to think about the toll on the human capacity of the business accounting and office. It consists, HR and the business office consists of four and a half people. When this happens, it, it is, it is going to be a massive undertaking, one that we will do, one that we will participate in. But I, I think I would be remiss if I didn't speak on behalf of the people who work tirelessly every day for this budget, do what's in their best, try their best, come to work. And so this is going to take place. So, which is fine, but I, I do think we need to reflect on, is there the human capacity involved in that department to do whatever audit somebody else wants and still perform the job that we have to? I'm not sure. I know that Mr. Stamberg won't say it, so I'm just, I'm just saying, maybe we can reflect on that also.
Yeah, I guess, um, I reflected on it before I broached this topic with Jeff, before this meeting. So that was a conversation we had, um, because I wouldn't bring it up without having first had that conversation with administration on, hey, this is the thought. Um, I will add to that, the conversation we also had is we may need to have a conversation as a group in terms of the resources that we have in terms of our financial operations. But to me, that kind of starts with, if you do the audit and you identify what you need, maybe we do need a part-time resource to come in and help. Because if he's uncovering things left and right or working through things, I think we'd all feel better with making sure that we have sufficient resources to do that. But it starts with the understanding of what do, what needs to be done, right? So opposed to working on this, working on this, working on this, because I look at that guy and I kind of see some of that, right? I'm working on this, I'm working on this, I need to start the budget. Okay, but it's never going to help us, him, any of us, if we don't get to that point where we all feel good about the foundation, because otherwise it's.
I just was, I'm just trying to.
I'm with you.
Trying to make sure we cover our bases enough.
Yes.
But if you're thinking about it, that's right.
Yes, well, hopefully we're thinking.
We're thinking on the same page, same page. I, I think the purpose for today was to make, we get it out in the open. I fully support the audit as well. Tell me what we are doing right, tell me what we're doing wrong. And a fresh set of eyes, it always helps me, it always helped us grow as a teacher, as an administrator. You know, I can't fix it if I don't know what's broken. If the towns want to do this, I think there's a process, they have to bid it out. I think us supporting them financially at the end, as long as we get a copy. So that we can work together, I, I'd like, and share that, I think that's important.
Yes, you're fast on that, Hillary.
So I was going to say, kind of like George, is I have a concern about that because they have to prepare for the regular audit and I watch them do that before, when I go to meetings up there and it's such a process. And I, you know, I think we're really putting a lot on them. I understand the, the need. I do have a question. The two towns, I take it, would have a committee that works together to look for, they get one audit?
Right now, as far as, so the, all I've seen is what I've seen in the selectmen's meeting, which are the public meetings, and they've both said that they're looking to move forward with it. So whatever conversations they're going to have, they'll have to kind of figure out.
Because they have to, I'm assuming that it's one audit, that's what I'm looking at. That the two towns will work together to do one audit.
That's what they've said.
Um, I am concerned a little bit about the money because I'm concerned about, you know, we always run short for this and for that. And now we're committing to spending more money on something else. And we don't know what that amount is going to be, because we don't know how long it's going to take and we don't know what the charges are going to be, et cetera, because we're not, we're not going to be in on the choice. Is what I'm thinking. But I am concerned about the amount of work that we're putting on, uh, less and less employees that we've had in the main office upstairs. It's cut back, it's been cut back. And, um, you know, we're missing one or two that we used to have. So it is a concern of mine that these people have to do even more work than we're already asking them to do with less help. That's a concern for me. And I, I understand we want to look good in both towns and all that. I understand all that, because there's been so many issues about questioning what happens here. Yeah, so I'm really having, you know, like Don said, I'm, I'm having mixed emotions about the whole thing because of the fact of putting more work on our already, you know, busy personnel, you know?
Yeah, so, and I think part of it is, we have to consider, regardless of what we decide, if the towns vote to move forward with the audit, then are we going to take a position that we're not going to cooperate, right? Cooperate? So it's right, some of this is, the towns have already kind of made the determination that they want to look at the financial operations of the district. Like that's something that they have decided to do. So I'm looking at this simply as an opportunity, that if there are things that we can learn, that we can do better, that are going to help us, to me, that's a thing that we shouldn't break. Because I don't want to be sitting here every six months with, oh, well, now we have this issue or now we uncovered that issue or now we identified this. To me, while it's, it's, it's either pain now or pain later, right? It's getting through and understanding and making sure that everything is working as it should and feeling good about that, so that we can move forward with some of these things. So there's a couple of different pieces, but, look, we can, if you want to think about it a little bit more, we can hold off until the, um, January 12th meeting, so you can think about it, because we haven't talked about this. So that's perfectly fine if you want to listen to the towns. Because there is, there is another piece here that the towns decide not to move forward with it or they go out to bid, or this does take some time. To me, I think we should support the audit because, or anything that we can do that is going to help us be better. That's the point to me. But whether we do the financial piece or not, that's for consideration. So I defer to you as a committee in terms of where you want to go.
Do you need me to withdraw my motion or?
Do you always want to think about it a little bit more?
Can I just ask a question?
Yeah.
So I understand, Circuit Breaker, January 5th, I'm not talking about that. And perhaps, I, you know, I wasn't on the committee with the, um, assessments. But I guess, because I'm an English teacher, I don't understand how an audit would have uncovered the assessment issue. I, I guess my question, and I, thank you for explaining what audits are and how there's different kinds and stuff. I mean, are, are they, I have concerns about whether we do pay, whether we do help. I don't understand, and this is probably my ignorance about auditing, because I don't, I'm not math. You know, what will an audit do? How would an audit have helped the towns determine the assessment? Do you understand what I'm saying? Like I, like I heard you say two things, like we've had two issues, one with the assessment. And I understand Circuit Breaker is a different thing. I don't understand how an audit would have uncovered that or would have provided information. The other concern that I have is, you know, as members of the school committee, we look at the budget and we decide the best way to spend the money in the interest of the students. And I have concerns about people who are not on the school committee making those decisions in a sense too. I, I just, I guess that, and it's my ignorance in regards to audits, so I don't know if that's another conversation for another time. Um, but those are just things that, questions that I have.
So, yeah, and I think generally speaking, Don, you can help me here if you feel the wise. But audits are basically a point in time assessment of, are you falling, you know, against the set of principles, right? So obviously that's part of audit scope, what are you looking at and what are you checking? So if it's, some of it is, I'm sure relating to reporting and it's, you were supposed to report this, did you? Okay, what's your backup supporting documentation for your reported? You reported this number, where did it come from? Show us. You reported this box was checked, where did it come from? How did you do that? So typically that's kind of the audit. I can't, I don't see how an audit would be like, well, you spent too much here, you spent too much there. I, I don't, to me, that's not an audit. That's a, that isn't, did you report it right? That's why or what decision did you make? So that to me is, that would be outside of the scope of an audit. But again, I think it's up to the committee to think about. Again, I, I think, I wanted to, I wanted to make sure that we talked about this, because we haven't and I've seen it be brought up in both selectmen's meeting. And I think it was something that we should kind of talk through as a committee, so we are. We don't have to do anything with it now, we can wait and see. We can think about it a little bit, but.
We don't have to. If, if, if both towns decide that they're going to audit the district, we don't have to do anything. I mean, I guess that's my.
So I guess, right. So again, then we would kind of go through the sequence of that. So if both towns decide to do an audit, we would have one or two choices. We could say, sure, we'll cooperate with the audit, or we could say, no, we won't. Those would be our choices. I think you can quickly come to some pros and cons to both of those, um, answers, right? But, you know, I think there's a difference between saying financial support and operational support. And maybe you want to understand a little bit more about what the scope is. That, those are all fair questions. Like I said, I wanted to make sure we brought it up and we talked about it. So Sean, do you have a comment? I know you've been here.
Might I just add?
Just name and address and yes, please add.
Sean Kane, 31 Florida Street. I think, um, along the lines of what you were saying, like, uh, for me, I've been working with, um, you know, a town of Whitman to kind of implement some financial policy. And the financial policy is kind of based on best practices in budgeting for municipal finance. And I think that's relevant as far as like moving forward, what are some of the things that we can do to make sure that we stay on solid ground financially? And I think that's valuable information. And I think that might be a, I mean, we've kind of followed the budget over the last couple of years. I think the, one of the reasons in my, in my opinion, the, the towns wanting the budget is for more transparency and to make sure that like things are in line with regulation, you know? But I think some other valuable information that really maybe this committee could consider is best practices pertaining to the budget about how to stay on strong financial ground. You know, like, I don't know much about what you said earlier, but think about like the new position that is potentially being considered for the bilingual. And when, when you ask like, where's the, what's the funding source for that? Having like a strong, a strong backing for, we have a funding source, we budgeted for it, you know, the last couple of years and we're stepping forward in a confident way. as opposed to not quite knowing or not being confident about it, you know? Or you mentioned the potential funding source for full DK. Like, is this something you want to go forward with over and above, like with the current budget? Or is this something we should pay for out of E and D? You know, like, financial policy might guide some of those decisions, you know? Because, you know, paying for full DK out of E and D to get it started where it's not a sustainable funding source, that might be something that you may not want to do. Or it might be something you wanted to get it going, you know what I mean? But some financial policy to complement the, I think, the audit might give more of the, I think, moving forward, the best practices pertaining to the budget that would, I think, really be appreciated by the towns, if that makes sense.
It does, it does. So everyone want to think about it a little bit more? Okay, that's fine. You'll withdraw. And who is our second?
The guy with, I'll retract.
Okay, great.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So we'll move on. Again, I encourage you to kind of watch that and the various watching screening, see what they're talking about, and we'll kind of figure out how best to move forward with all that. So subcommittee reports, Jeff?
So I'm here from Whitman Middle School Building. We'll meet, more likely than not, the week we return. I spoke about where we are in the building project right now. Facility Subcommittee, I spoke to Mike. We're going to try to meet Facility Subcommittee on January 5th, right before Circuit Breaker.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll send that out. The Policy Subcommittee, I don't know, Michelle or Hillary, you want to speak to that? Chris isn't here.
Sure. So you have our, everyone should have a copy of our focus and recommendations for the year. We, at the last meeting, came up with, we have a draft for non-union personnel.
Yep, yes.
So we just.
We have a, so we put together the scope document for you guys to vote on tonight. And I was going to present the non-union stuff today, but I knew members weren't going to be here. Specifically, I knew Fred wasn't going to be here, and he brought up the fact originally about contracts. So I didn't want to vote on something without Fred here. So I want to push that back to the January meeting. But we have a draft document for administrative contracts. But today, we're looking for you to vote the focus and recommendations of the Policy Subcommittee.
Okay, so can we get a motion to vote the scope document? Second. Any additional discussion, questions, comments? Okay. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Against? Good, abstaining. Mike, you were for?
Yes.
All right, great, sorry. Unanimous then, Michelle.
Since Chris isn't here, I know Hillary and Michelle are on Related Arts. Chris and I said, we spoke the other day, we have to get a meeting together. We haven't met since September for the Related Arts Subcommittee. I know our talk in September really wasn't really going to impact the FY23 budget anywhere. It was going to be more of a long-term conversation about how we want to affect Related Arts over a timeframe.
Okay.
I'm good with that.
Pilgrim Area Collaborative, Steve, do you have anything?
Yes, I do. So we went back to Zoom format, and our meeting for December was December 2nd. And we only did that just because we're from such a widespread area. We felt it was best. So we had a good meeting. Just to run through a few things, we posted our annual report. It's on the pilgrimac.org website. I remember to put that up so I could tell you that. And then we also approved the auditor that we're going to have for the upcoming year. And in October, we had the audit done. I think I mentioned that to you all. So I just wanted to make sure. Couple of things I may have been mistaken on, though, when I gave my October report, which was in November or whatever. I don't think I reported on the disbursements that we voted in October. So Whitman Hansen is getting back $3,357. And we do this once a year after all of our books are closed for the previous year. So I don't know if it's considered FY21. I'm pretty sure it is. But it's very similar to what we've had in the past. And I think you might have heard me report it. Anyone who wasn't here probably isn't familiar, but I'm certainly happy to tell you about that. And just like Jeff was reporting, that the numbers are down for South Shore Collaborative and so forth, or the other collaboratives. I mentioned that last month, and I have to apologize a little bit. What I didn't, I didn't want to leave you with the perception that we're just totally down across the board. Our services have increased so much, whether they're in schools, whether they're in homes, whether they're, whatever it is. And actually, the annual report will help identify and tell you a lot more about that. And I was just so remiss. I'd just give you a factual number of, you know, we're down X percent or whatever, 120 students across the board. That isn't the case. We've, obviously, we're down in the actual enrollments, but it's all these other services that we've had to provide. So wanted to correct that for everyone. I'm sorry, that was a little long.
No, thank you, thank you. ECE, we've already covered it.
So I covered a little bit on ECE, and I know we're going to touch base at some point. Probably once break is over and I can get John and Darlene around the table with David and Don.
And then just to recap before we adjourn, so next meeting dates, we will have a January 5th meeting, 6:30. We will have a January 12th meeting, which is our regular scheduled January meeting at 6:30. And then Jeff and I had talked about moving one of the February meetings. So we have the February 2nd is our public budget meeting. And then we have a meeting on the 16th that we were hoping to move back to the 9th. So we'll kind of go back-to-back weeks in January and back-to-back weeks in February. I don't, we have to vote, we don't have to vote that, right? We just have to make sure everyone's good.
Just get the people good.
So just jot those meetings down. It'll be the 5th, the 12th of January, the 2nd, and now the 9th of February. Okay? Awesome. All right. Well, before we break, hopefully everyone enjoys a nice, safe, happy holiday. So with that.
Everybody, yes.
Entertained, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All right, all those in favor?
Double hands, double hands.
Good night. Thank you, everyone.
Merry Christmas, everyone.
Good night.